That's right, that's legal flag. Please read the subdivision plans.
The time is not patient, we're publishing.
Please be quiet in the audience.
Park press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the town. Playwood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public meeting that. Does someone have a duty of planning in their area? Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Stable, Mr. Plant, though.
Here.
Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Brenner.
Here.
Mr. Iserson. Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Raisin.
Can you say your questions?
This is where our test ready before the program is a trouble here than nothing.
Yes. Okay, my little station to resolutions.
The first resolution is SD twenty-three ninety-four, it's a minor subdivision.
Move. Second. All in favor, aye.
I understand that.
Thank you. The second, SD twenty-three twenty-three, major segment.
So, the second all in favor, aye.
Aye. SD twenty-three eight, minor subdivision.
Move the second all in favor, aye.
Aye. And SD twenty-sixty-three, extension minor subdivision.
Move. For the second all in favor, aye. Aye.
Correspondence SD twenty-fifty-five, referred to across LLC. This is a previously approved major subdivision, the applicant has submitted a request.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, sit here for one minute, for one second.
This gentleman, temporary correspondence is not equal in language, we do not have notice provided. We consider correspondence an administrative change, which is the reason it's correspondence rather than a legislative review.
It's administrative review, that goes, be done by today or tomorrow, that doesn't require. And if you're abstaining, that doesn't really work unless. Okay, we, we, we're getting two more members here, okay, just stay, but tell them, so let's, let's start. So we'll go on to the public hearing right now.
Public hearing, I have number one, SD twenty-three ninety-five, for base river and cabinet of Lakewood, it's a major subdivision, create sixteen lots on Good Avenue. One of those lots is for the following application, SD twenty-three twenty-five, under the same name for.
Are we hearing it, hearing it together?
Together, or will it be tax exempt?
Okay, Terry.
Okay.
Uh, you going, you have two reports?
Uh, yes, we're currently looking at the major subdivision. From, uh, certainly with that major subdivision first, because the board has a back on the subject first, to creating a forward consent. So. So, in most of what a letter of July twenty-fifth, I'm starting the submission waivers, such as the table page three. They include the B waivers, TOPO, Congress, and manning deed for the two hundred feet. Uh, environmental impact statement, and architectural drawings. As indicated in the letter, we have enough information on the plans and support of the B waivers. Uh, we can support the EIS, uh, since there's none of our other strengths with the understanding, uh, that it proves branded. Uh, the applicants will comply with the preordance. Um, and finally, um, we defer the board relative to architectural drawings.
Do we have a motion, all in, is recognition?
Yes, so we're including the number five also, like, since twenty-one.
Correct, that's the architectural.
Yeah, okay, so, so, you're proposing to say that because the board is not opposing it.
Right.
Okay.
If the board's comfortable with that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be.
Second all in favor, aye.
All right, and then moving on to zoning, uh, variance relief includes, uh, lot width variances. I believe those are the only variances necessary, that's right. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes, you want to, you talk in subdivision?
Um, which, which I've waited aboard with like, um, first, okay, evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Marion Weinstein on behalf of the applicant base river and cabinets. Um, what I was gonna, what I was gonna say is that, you know, this applicant, you get two for the price of one. Um, you told me how you wanna do it, I thought we first will present the subdivision and then we'll present the site plan. The first application is the major subdivision application, that is to subdivide the existing tract into sixteen new lots to front on the new cul-de-sac, which is to be known as Farmer's Way. A boys' elementary school is going to be proposed on one of the lots. The site plan application, that, that we will address shortly, is for that boys' elementary school. The other fifteen lots would be developed with single-family homes. In the R twelve zone that we're in, the minimum required lot width is ninety feet. The applicant proposes varying lot widths that range from seventy-five point oh four feet to eighty-three point eighty-two feet. And therefore, we are requesting a variance for lot width. That is the only, those are the only variances that are being requested in connection with this application.
Ms. Weinstein, I'm sorry, Mr. Raisin is here, I believe that he walked into the bathroom as you started. He had to show this application, I just wanted to warn him, and the record to be clear.
But we didn't start in the testimony, actually.
Your introduction part.
And all we have is an introduction, so I believe, I believe.
You can sit on it.
You can sit on it, because we didn't. But I was gonna do it this point, John, I guess, if we can have Brian sworn.
Please, right, and he swore, from testimony, he put his form, he's all good.
I do, Brian Flannery, Jack's New Jersey, like, professional engineer, professional planner, I have three exhibits marked. A one is a copy of the layout of the master plan, it shows the lots that are proposed, along with the layout of the school. A two is a architectural rendering of the school that's proposed. And A three is a copy of two fifty-eight, the tax update showing where this property sits. Uh, and as we're indicated, we're asking for lot width variance on some of the lots, residential lots, uh, to have something five feet where ninety feet is required. Uh, and one of the reasons to do that is make narrower, deeper lots, so that the, uh, impact on, if you want any existing residential lots will be minimal. Uh, the applicant did meet with the, uh, the neighbors, uh, to, to get their input, to come up with a, uh, a plan that they, uh, felt with the neighbors, to convince the neighbors, and, and that the neighbors would agree with them. And they agreed, the neighbors aren't objecting, uh, to six conditions. One, which would be, that long line I mentioned to the last on Jackson Road, which would be east of the property line. Uh, condition number one, that they would be a fence along the back of that line, so that there'd be a buffer in, in both directions. Condition number two, there would be landscaping along with that fence, again, in the same direction. Uh, condition number three would be widening Ridge Road, uh, and Ridge is a, Ridge Avenue is a county road. So, the county's gonna make it widen anyway. Uh, we're gonna request widening it and request a center turn lane, uh, as the county approved that, and that would make a significant widening, which would be a benefit to the whole area, including this project. Uh, so, so that's conditions three and four. Condition number five, which is a little unusual, I haven't done one of these in Lakewood, but the bowl of the cul-de-sac, which is RSI is compliant. The neighbors think if it was, the radius was three foot more, uh, that would be beneficial, and, and the applicant would agree to make the, the bowl of the cul-de-sac, the car weight, three foot more. And, and do that within the existing right-of-way, to the extent that sidewalks would be on the lots, that were in eastern of the sidewalks. Uh, and, uh, condition number five would be, the sidewalk along Ridge Avenue, we would make six feet wide instead of four feet wide. And that would be consistent with some of the existing sidewalks that's out there.
Now, any demands?
No, no, and, and certainly, these conditions are something that this applicant resup, if the board is in favor of them, and, and the one, to the extent the county's in favor. Uh. But if you make the bowl three foot wider, uh, the bus can turn around. The bus can turn around in every other town, and the RSI is compliant one. Uh, in Lakewood, people park them, so the buses can't turn around. My feeling is that if you make it three foot wider, more people park in, and the bus can still have trouble turning around. But the applicant, uh, has no dog in that fight, he's, he's happy to, uh, provide a little more pavement, if the neighbors feel that it's helpful, if the board feels it, it's helpful.
Always helpful.
Uh, they want the bus going up the cul-de-sac, around the stuff on Ridge Avenue. I, I didn't talk to the neighbors, but, you know, my understanding is that that's the logic of it, that they, they want the bus going up the cul-de-sac. Uh, so, getting, getting back to the, the two projects, I'll, I'll go through the relief that's required, uh, and, and the, on the subdivision first, which is Terry, any case, I'm gonna light out this big lot for the school, including the school out change. Uh, looking at the R D E, the torch. Uh, uh, it indicates, uh, on page three, on, on zoning lot width variances ranging from seventy-five to four feet, between eighty and ninety feet required. And these are simple, simple variances that have just happened way to detriment. My special testimony is, this is no detriment, this is the only thing that I can, uh, uh, even be able to perceive that the lots are a little narrower, this is the need to move people through, through the, this cul-de-sac. And the benefit is, those houses are further away from the other ones, all the lots are on twelve thousand square feet, consistent with the R twelve. That's, that's the only variance that's required. Page four is missing, for some reason.
The record would like the state leaders here, um, I do not believe you can sit on this, first I have it.
I've been listening to all one of the, the enough talk.
Uh.
What? Yeah, so, you do this time.
Two, 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 five.
Uh, Mary, thank you.
So, damage enough?
Yes. Uh, the, uh, page four seems to have a few comments, and we comply with the, uh, the question. The, uh, additionally, I'm hoping for, with the night, I've marked up, uh, that's why, with respect to a home association, uh, I obviously, these are six grand lots for nothing, a home association. Getting to the site plan. So, the, the site plan is shown on, uh, on, on show's layout, parking in front of the building, uh. Uh, so, uh, on page three, uh, it indicated a buffer variance we require, one foot, uh, white buffer. Uh, and, and my testimony is, as, as, not a variance, because the, the land with the ordinance is, uh, if you leave points for buffer, then you don't have to provide a fence for the landscaping. We're providing a fence, landscaping, so my testimony is, you're complying with the ordinance. If Terry feels we need a variance, we will request a variance, as an above this proportion, so we are complying with the intensity ordinance, which is, like, fencing and, and the, and the landscaping. And the applicant has met with his only one neighbor, which would be the neighbor to the west, uh, that's impacted by that, uh, and, and that neighbor, uh, feels that the fence, that, that landscaping goes with the program. Uh, uh, Wall Street parking is not permitted, uh, within five feet of the adjoining lot. We, we are requesting a variance for that, there are multiple spaces that are within five feet. We have, uh, ten more spaces than were required, so the applicant can conceivably get rid of those parking spaces, and comply with the ordinance. Uh, but, it really doesn't, uh, benefit anybody, additional parking spaces are certainly a greater benefit, which is why, my testimony, I'll follow through with the master plan, on how the benefits outweigh the detriment. So, that's an, an item that the applicant could comply with, but it's something that would be counterproductive to the general good to comply with. Uh, on page four, Terry indicates that the, the parking spaces conflict with the shade tree utility, uh, and as my testimony, that there's no restriction on drives or parking in a shade tree or utility. We feel that what's proposed, uh, is appropriate for the school, it provides the visibility to the school, the common doors that it can be shifted back, because the room, we'd rather leave that room, as you see, in front of the school. I'm reading from the July twenty-fifth, uh, SD twenty-three twenty-five.
I'm on the site.
Oh, you're on the site, oh, that was. Yes, I. Well, we talked about the subdivision. If you missed it, because the subdivision has one variance, and, and I went through that, oh, we got a conflict. Yes.
And then he went through Terry's report and said we got conflicts in.
It makes you feel any better, we refer up here, too.
Terry, I'm, I'm trying to slow down, I, I.
Do you have any other questions, Terry?
One second, just, Ryan, one second.
A couple of questions, if I could, um, I, I heard testimony earlier, uh, I guess, on the subdivision, that you're, you're not, you're not, is that correct?
That is correct.
Which would mean that the ownership of acres of the road and the drainage under the road, the intent is that the township.
That is correct.
Sorry. Chairman?
Yes.
If the board acts favorably on the subdivision, we recommend that that be conditioned to DPW approval of the road design, like, cul-de-sac, uh, as well as the underground story, uh, within, uh, with, showing this farmer's drive. Now, I'm gonna switch the site plan now. Um, looking at the site plan, you have underground drainage as part of the cul-de-sac, I assume that that's gonna be probably maintained.
It's only maintained, I mean, the school.
All right, so then you would agree to meeting requirements of that J is a separate, relative to a maintenance plan.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, let, let me then read the, uh, from the master plan, and the, uh, municipal land use law, the justification for the. I thought, I looked at the board, everybody seemed okay with it, so I kept going, and I know we have long. So, so, the, the justification for the seventy-five foot wide lots is the C two variance. The, uh, master plan in two thousand seventeen says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart road planning principles, a balanced mix of land uses, pedestrian-friendly, and transitory to the environment. And, and my testimony does that. The, uh, municipal land use law in A, C, forty-four, fifty-five, D two, under the purpose of the act, is to encourage municipal actions to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote all health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And my testimony does it. For the C two variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property, and I think when we look at, uh, A one and A three, you can see this is a very unique piece of property. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, for what I indicated, and, and that the impact on the neighbors is less, we provide the housing opportunities that are required by the, uh, master plan. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, this is the effect on the surrounding area, and my testimony is, it's actually better for the surrounding area. The variance will not carry the intent purpose of the zone plan and building rent, and if, if providing a, a, a lot for a, a beneficial use, if providing lots that are the appropriate size stipulated the ordinance, or at the appropriate density. So, I, I think we, we say, well, those bases, and, and the benefits outweigh the detriment, that's, that's anything dated early on. My testimony is that there are only benefits, there are no negatives.
Any questions? Any important on the subdivision? Right, and they, right now it's owned by a nonprofit corporation. Can I match it? If I don't want to see.
Right now, the property?
Yeah.
Right now, we're the contract purchaser, to purchase the property.
So, once you close, you'll, the, a nonprofit will own the entity, will own the property.
Correct.
So then, after you build a school, for the school, that will, this will be nonprofit, that will be tax exempt, which is fine.
Just that one lot. That one lot, after we build the school, will become tax exempt?
Will be tax exempt.
Yes, that's correct.
Are the other fifteen lots intended to be sold to individual human beings, paying? Or is that faculty housing?
No, that is, they're intended to be sold to individuals who will be taxpaying citizens.
Will we let taxpayers, citizens, be paid? Mr. Jackson, shall I, will you go on the subdivision?
Yes.
Anybody who's a couple of, like, to be heard on the subdivision?
Actually, before you do that, I just, you don't mind if I could just point out that there are many, many people in the audience, I think most of them are parents of the school. If I could just ask them to raise their hands to show that they're in support of the application. I don't think you wanna hear from each and every one of them. I know, but, just in case, they're all gonna come up, you should know that they're here as parents in support of the application.
Anybody who's a couple of, like, to be heard on the subdivision only? The same only, only public? Ask for a motion on subdivision, make one, make that one, just that. Mr. Plant, would you move? Turn second, draw.
Mr. Stables?
Yes.
Mr. Stable? Mr. Blight? Mr. Raisin?
Yes.
Mr. Becker? Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Yes.
Please be quiet in the audience, you cannot hear us, make the record now. Now, back to the terminology, you know, on the, now on the side.
They may be virtually similar, if not identical, to what I created in the credit, on the subdivision sense, it's the same sense of the credit. Uh, this application, it identified TOPO, onto a man of quarters, which would be two hundred feet, as well as EIS, uh, can be supported. You voted, they're the same, B waivers, you had architecturals on the major subdivision, you don't have here, because of the.
Because you have architecturals for the school. I would hope so.
It's a different application.
Okay, and then on the zoning relief, I believe, Ron, in testimony on this, but we interpreted that buffer variance is necessary for A D nine and six. We do recognize that things like evergreen fencing, and that evergreen buffer and fencing are identified remedies, but we recommend that you act upon the barriers. Ron, we would also testify as to the parking.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't believe so. And we've talked about the store location of the school. I think we agree with only our technical comments.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ryan, I do, you already have the report. And Terry, with the, with the zoning relief, you'd like to start again?
No.
Okay. The zoning release on A three, the buffer variance, the order is stipulated that if you provide, if you provide buffer on the turf, then you have to provide fencing and tree. But it literally says if you don't provide it, might be able to, it's actually free to it, that says, we would slide it to that tree. My testimony is really, we're going to answer it, because it's very associated with that. With respect to the number three under variances for the parking within IP, we see the question of course, coming within IP, it's an angled situation, these numbers of IP, that so the variance recorded, my testimony is that we're going to answer that variance, because that is a providing of this parking outweighed the certain line requirement, in that we're providing the upper range at least, and if course, if that's the. The federal report also indicates on page four, that the parking on the genuine could be pushed back, so that you could have more areas in the shade tree utilities, and more greenery between the parking and residence, and look that as a county. In our opinion, that way it's done is appropriate, because it's a school parking lot that we wanted to be, or some people say, we'd rather keep that area between the bus drop off and the school, so that more area for the students, rather than minimize that area. I don't think we're violating any of the provision by having it there, but in my testimony, that that should stay as a. The report goes on, indicating that we provided seventy, we were required to have seventy-three parking places between A and three, so we do have some requirements required by the ordinance. All is bound to be a good thing. The school operations, we're going to plug ahead, but we did pretty much a performance of a traffic engineer set. The trash and recyclables, we anticipate that will be DPW to the same level of the other schools. The H D H C will improve to a city. Strike positions will be provided as required by the building codes. On A seven, under twenty-five, we have a gaming plan, and on the shade tree, potential recommendations, my, as I always do, that we will comply with one of the ones that are reasonable and required. Certainly, if your replacement of Admiral Lee would be joint, we have no problem with that. And all the other liner factors you may have to deal with, we would comply with. The justification for the variance is the same book. Some of it, it says, they heard us, we are reasonable, which I can't believe it says. The municipal land use law, A D three, we just divide the two under perfectly that, and we're just like, guide the appropriate use of the public role and state, no matter what people call it, health, safety, or open to the rest. My testimony does that, it provides a lot of use, and to the extent that variances that we requested, or C two variances, it certainly relates to a specific piece of property to the school. The purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, and that's the fight, and we grant it to have the potential to be of all the good, and in a case of operator, we provide, and all these, that impact, variance, uh, apparently, that's purpose, we provide a school, and as the rule of need, and, and benefits, it would be far outweighing. We have a traffic engineer here, if you'd like to have. Yeah, but probably, if we, if we plan that way, we're going to have a prison. The bus drop off right in front of the school, is the bus drop off variant, right in front of the school, and there's a decision. Possibly to accommodate the buses that are leaving, indicated in traffic reports, indicated that there would be an actual, they have listed, indicated the yards time, and the parker time, which is staggered, so it's a school that knows, but they're knowing that they provide a, in my comments. But, and that's an existing situation where, without my thanks, or to the extent that we're improving, we have here, with the county, that will help with this, but, you know, we need schools to, to show some of this school, and others, and this school, and beyond roads. We have, we have a, a little service, unfortunately, in, in that. Does the county want to whiting across the school or the front row? Well, we're proposing whiting across our country. And they said that this position, that incorporated, that we do that. If you want to hear from the traffic engineer, he, he has conversations with the county engineer, about improvements that they know he's been making. Well, that's why this transition, this transition back to the specific case. That's why we have the traffic engineer to make sure it's unsealing, and the county engineer and board engineer that called through you, and also.
I was just going to say, would you like me to call the traffic engineer?
It's based on one prepared for the whole.
What about the central hall in the basement? Three hundred square foot central hall in the basement, what about the parking for that?
The central hall in the basement is going to be used for smaller type synchos, like a Shabbat practice. It's not a wedding hall, I'm just working out, do you know what it is? It's not a wedding hall. It's not going, it's going to be used at times of the day when the school is not in use. So it's going to be used at different times. If Brian, you can address the qualifications for the central hall.
Yeah, how many parks, basically, in that school?
If it were a synagogue, and had a central hall, how do you book it?
Well, the shul's required for a central hall, point seven five per square foot. So, but schools do not, and to the extent that it's not being used, as they're indicated, it doesn't, doesn't have a parking requirement. And my understanding of why that was done years ago, when they're done, is because they're not going to do it where it's in conflict with the parking of the school. And if the school's not open, they're going to have eighty-three parking. Catering hall. You have to look at what the, you have to look at what the use of this.
Brian, right, the question, right. Catering hall, Donnarumma Avenue, forty-three hundred square feet, how many parking spots are required? It's a very simple question, and I suppose that has a simple answer.
Well, it's really not a simple question, but if we just look by the point seven five, that, that Ali pointed out for the. Four seven hundred square feet, you have a system sure. Yes.
Backwood hall. How's it all? How do you figure out the parking spot?
Well, backwood halls, you go by the seating, some of, some of the uses, uses that are in the industrial park, go by one, four hundred square feet, which would be similar to the point seven five for hundreds.
Terry, maybe you can help.
There is, there is, to my knowledge, a parking calculation for a central park. There is, there is stuff binding. Restaurant, as Mr. Flatter said, are calculated based on the number of seats.
So how, how does it get counted, like, do you make the seats? Have you seen the parking spot? No. How do you work? By restaurant?
Restaurants are typically one parking space for every fifty square feet of seating. Some, in, in other towns, for a bank or pool, they would have one parking space for every five or six seats. But if you want to get more parking, and generalize feeling of other parking requirements, the traffic engineer, he, he would have it.
We can ask that Scott Kennel's one?
I do, Scott Kennel, Dunn and Race Oceans. Has it relates to the parking, if you're looking at Silverstone Bank Hall? Eighty-three parking spaces. And if you use the recommended standards, which is typically, one space for three seats, you could accommodate two hundred and forty seats, or approximately two hundred and forty people, with eighty-three parking spaces. So if you get forty-three hundred square feet, you can approximately two hundred and twenty-five seats.
So what, so what happens when somebody makes a bar, that, and, and, four seven thirty, a hundred fifty people show up? Where is everybody going to park?
Well, hundreds, I mean, every single place in Ridge Avenue, sorry, answers on there.
Well, a bar, which is an engagement party, for those who don't know what it is, typically, not all the guests show up at the same time. It's called for several hours throughout the evening, and you don't have a hundred fifty people. Scattered, and it's usually a three to four hour time span, and it's, and scattered. Just to clarify, this is not a wedding hall, there will not be any weddings in this hall. At weddings, bar mitzvahs don't typically have more than the two hundred and twenty-five people that you can fit in the hall.
How many of the eighty-three?
And they're not all coming in separate cars.
How many of the eighty-three spots are handicapped?
Four spaces.
Just for the board, to put the record, the, if you want, if the board wants to get an idea of the size of the parking lot, this would be comparable to the parking lot in Tefara Speciaco, which is a typical bar mitzvah type of, type of a hall. This hall's actually smaller. This hall is actually smaller than that hall, and I'm sure many of the board members speak with that hall, there is, there aren't, you don't typically find cars parked on Oak Street. There is ample parking for those events that take place in that hall.
General, I did tell the street board, the proper requirements for, general apartment parks will be used, restaurants, one hundred square feet.
I guess the questions were before, relative to the Ridge Avenue improvements. Based on conversations with Ocean County, their intent is to have Ridge Avenue from Brook to New Hampshire, a three lane cross section, or that means one travel lane in each direction, with a center left turn lane. The improvements we're doing along the frontage, which is a twenty-five foot half section wide, will accommodate that whole. According to Brook. I'm not aware of that, Brook and Ridge Avenue, it's supposed to be three. My understanding, there's, they, it doesn't meet the warrant's base of traffic. Ton of issues that I've observed from, at that location, to do with site distance, and like, based on my investigation, there's already been one major, large tree removed from that intersection that was prohibiting, or limiting site distance, looking to east from Brook Road, or in the south approach. And in my opinion, there should be additional trees removed. There's also parking that occurs on the west side intersection in front of the school that should be pulled back, in my opinion, and that's something, I guess that can be discussed with the county. But that is, you know, an all-site location. The county is aware of improvements necessary there. They've made communications with the municipality, and it's an ongoing process. I can't convey what the timeframe is, but they're aware of it, and they, their proposal is to have Ridge Avenue, a three lane cross section, after Brook Road, as well as across the site frontage. That's at Brook Road, the south approach, and that's based on 2029 traffic volumes. So it's traffic growth, other developments, and it's, it's, the location has to be monitored. Traffic lights are just not installed at, at any time. They have to meet certain traffic volume thresholds. The thresholds aren't achieved today, but when you add growth, and we reviewed 2029 design year, then it starts hitting that, that level of service. And, you know, obviously, that is a reason for the county to monitor that location for when it achieves, meets the warrants that are established by NJDOT and the Federal Highway Administration. They're going to be all on site, and they, they have a situation where it's going to be staggered start times, starting from seven thirty, seven forty-five through to nine o'clock, as well as the afternoon, afternoon dismissals are staggered as well. The plan as presented, if the first bus is on the west wing side, you can accommodate six buses there. It's projected they're going to have eight buses serving the site. So given the fact that they're being staggered, in my opinion, sites can design to accommodate anticipated demand. Show this proposal. To the, to the west.
Oh, right.
To the north. Plain areas, my understanding.
It's going to be clear.
I guess the question is, way it's laid out, some difficulty apart, and the data goes back there. Can you park on Ridge? Well, right now, we can't park on Ridge nine, right? Okay, so can you park on Ridge, just county, can you park on the site? My understanding, just west of the site, it's a cross section that wouldn't accommodate parking, but we can request that the county, when you go to the county, that we're going to park along our frontage, we have, my recommendation is to have the access worked as efficiently as possible. And it's part of the county's improvements, which is a three lane cross section. The shoulder would only be three to five feet, that would not enable people to park. So again, the county's plan is to prohibit parking along Ridge Avenue.
Which is fine, but if you're going to be, this is not the middle of nowhere, so all those people are probably going to be at basements, so you have two people in the parking thing, you have two people now, they'll be parking on the street, so you're not going to have any room to park.
Which is ample parking spaces to accommodate the basements, there's two cars for the upstairs, two cars for the basement, there should be ample parking for the houses.
I know that, but there's not enough parking for the residential, it's going to be parking on the street. So then, there's going to be no overflow parking on the street, there's going to be no overflow parking on Ridge Avenue, because it's, I don't know, maybe illegal or unsafe. So the only parking you're going to have is the eighty-three spots on the site. And forty-three hundred, I think, we determined a couple of applications, but there's this room. And plus, there's a lunchroom as well.
There is parking on Farmer's Drive, and there are four parking spaces per unit. So there really, there really is going to be, there is going to be ample space to park on Farmer's, on Farmer's Drive.
My school requires a point seven five space.
That was a cat dress person who made this next. So if, if the concern is that four parking spaces per unit isn't enough. So if the concern is that four parking spaces per unit isn't enough, the applicant would, the units that are near the school, agree to have at least five spaces on the lot spaces for each one, so that each of them would have five spaces. So there'd be no reason to have a parking school or on the street in front of the school. But if the concern is that the Wood Police Act is going to be loading the bars, because there's not enough room in the driveway. My experience has been that when you have four parking spaces per unit, there's enough room in the driveway. They don't always park in the driveways, because sometimes they want the kids to play in the driveway. But we would agree to put in an extra fifth space, so that there'd be plenty of room for those that park in the driveway.
What did the original whisper find out?
1.5.
1.5?
1.5.
Perhaps. That's the problem.
Yes. Now, what's the venture? And I didn't do that on stage. I didn't do that application. I didn't say that on that submission board. Well, when you, when you look at 4300 square feet, even if we want by restaurant, 150, which is the highest parking standard, it's more than 0.75 for 100. That's 86 spaces. We have 83.
Including in the bucket.
Yes, including in the bucket. Well, and, and the testimony is that the variance makes sense and it provides parking for the school. And parking there for the school, it's also there for the actors.
That's fine, yes. That's fine. That's acceptable. That would be acceptable. School's over by 4:45. The last dismissal was at 4:45. We don't, you don't usually have to be parties before 4:45. I don't think it's an issue.
And we have a lunchroom as well, that potentially would be a lunchroom. Which is another 25 square feet.
A lunchroom is a lunchroom. The lunchroom is a lunchroom, it's going to look like a lunchroom. It's not really decorated in such fashion that it would be used as a symbol. Not a symbol.
Good evening, my name is Avram with Mannoritz.
Right, please raise your hand. This is where our firm testimony is being recorded for.
Yes. L-I-T-N-A-N-W-I-N-Z. Good evening, my name is Avram with Mannoritz. I'm a parent of four children in Yeshiva. With my oldest child being in school for seven years. I am also a teacher in the school for the last four years. And I ask that the board please hear out what I have to say. Since Yeshiva's commencement 22 years ago, it has built a reputation as being one of the premier schools in Lakewood. Its goal being to provide education second to none and where every child can shine. The evidence and success speaks for itself. However, after 22 years, we still don't have a building to call home. The building we're in now is rented and has very limited space. As a growing school, we are literally exploding out of our current building. We don't, we don't have enough classrooms, and the classrooms we do have are very limited in size and are not comfortable for students. In addition, the building is over 100 years old and without exaggeration, falling apart. Whenever there's a strong rain, you can be sure that the ground floor will be flooded. This hinders our ability as teachers to deliver what each and every student truly deserves. As everyone knows, that having adequately comfortable facilities are key to a child's success in his education. Tonight's application is not only what the school needs, it is also a unique application that gives our school a head start to really get this building on the way. I ask the board in the name of each and every parent and the name of each and every student of Yeshiva's Communes, to please grant us, who have been waiting for us for so long, a building of our own that we can call home and that each student will run with enthusiasm to school every day. I'm asking that the board please approve this application. Thank you.
Isaac Markowitz. Hi, I'm a neighbor, of Ridge Avenue, all of our Shemeshi. I think I speak for my neighborhood as well that we have really, obviously no projection to a Yeshiva on Ridge Avenue per se. We just feel like it's, obviously it needs to be done. Yeshiva needs a place, but it should be done correctly and safely. We should be skipping and looking at, you know, trying to squeeze out whatever we can, maximize the developer's profits or maximize whatever benefits the school has to the detriment of the neighbors or to the safety of people around. A few things come to mind. Obviously widening of the street on Ridge Avenue, that one lane each way. There's a lot of bus stops along with, because all the streets along the way have multiple kids standing on corners. There's a lot of stopping of traffic. There's a lot of curves and angles coming up from By Shameshi. And widening, not just in front of the school, which is worthless, widening most upgraded, at least from Brook all the way past White Oak. Where at some station out there, there's enough room for cars to go, you know, buses to come in and merge and come out. Without that, there's no question it's going to be a safety disaster. I don't know how they can get it done. Again, if they can't get it done, we have a, we have safety issues. I'm not, I'm not, I don't know the legalities or what, but I've lived here for 15 years. That corner is a disaster. Every few weeks, there's an accident on the corner. I know a street was taken out. There's still accidents there. Part of it is the facility, granted. Part of it is the curve coming from Shameshi. But it's just a tough corner. And then Ridge Avenue itself is, there's another school that is being developed right across the street from this, which has more buses. And there's a dormitory going on the corner of Ridge and Brook. This is not the only school that's there. So you're having multiple schools with more buses, more children. The shul there is there, very, very busy. It's got formate, you know, shops and gyms every single day, at least four or five. Two markets, so there's cars coming, it's a very busy area. It's a quiet, doesn't have a lot of houses, a lot of farmer in there and the two three developments. But there's a lot of activities. So we love Yeshiva there. We have song, Yeshiva is right there. We all benefit from it, we have no problem. But if you're adding all those buses and all those people, do it right. How many times we go around Lakewood and we see, you know, shuls and schools and things? And as much as they ran the numbers and they came in front of the board and they said, look, we have exactly enough. There's 83 and we have 72. At the end of the day, you look around, you see overflow parking, you see traffic, you see accidents, you see a lot of mess. It's a disaster. Go to Rappam Strits, it's a disaster. Go to Crossroads, it's a disaster. Even the Simkold, Lee Hyatt Avenue, the new Simkold, there's overflow parking all over Dustfield Bar. I mean, that's not the way it should be. Do it, but do it right. There's, there's, there are two schools, like I said. There should be the road widening and there should be enough parking. I mean, 83 spots, if you ask me, 83 spots. I know a bar has three hours, but there's, within a one hour period, there's a way. Every person has to bring their own car. But sometimes the husband and wife, they can't come at the same time, they bring two cars. So there's so many cars that are coming, and the husband and wife are dating. And then all the buses are coming and dropping off. There's so many things that can happen in a school today in Lakewood. You can't just look at the detail of the letter, say we have the exact amount enough. There should be enough parking, and really, there's no reason we can't. You just have to push the school back a little, make more parking spots. What's stopping it? The only thing that's stopping it is the developer wants 15 houses and he wants to be able to develop this way. Well, if you take away one house or two houses, you get yourself another 30 spots or 40 spots or whatever you can get, and you make it safer. Why not? This is not for the children. Everyone here can talk about, you know, this is a wonderful school and we all wanted to have this school here developed, and we do. But if they live there and their kids are all suddenly got into an accident or something happened, because, you know, there was too many cars blocking the road that you couldn't see. And there's, right now, the shul itself, the Gelprak shul, there's a belt to the shul in the corner. There's cars parked on the grass all over the place, because there's not enough parking. And I got it in that shul, I don't, you know, I'm taking the accident alarm. But at the end of the day, it's dangerous. There's accidents there all the time and there's cars parked all over the grass. So do we want that, again, in this area where the cars are grassy air and pushed out and the kids are hitching and everything? This is a very busy area. So do it, get it straight, make sure it's safe. Don't go with the letter of the law and the exact amounts. Give yourself a buffer, because in Lakewood for some reason, it's not being done. But make, make it a point. Give yourself a buffer, and then everyone will be happy. We'll have a school, the neighborhood will be happy, and everyone will be safe. Thank you.
Do you have a firm testimony to give before the board with the circuit of ultras and the others? Please state your name.
Daniel Fiazzi.
Please tell me your last name.
Alfred Frank AY DZI.
With the chairman's permission, please direct your comments to the board.
I'm going to start off, I'm not a public speaker. I just want to say a few words, so please bear with me. My name is Daniel Fiazzi. I'm the proud father of four children in the Communes. In fact, my oldest son came to Communes 21 years ago. Today, a proud father. My youngest son is entering the seventh grade. For 21 years, I witnessed my children going from building to building with no place to call home. During those 21 years, I was privileged to teach in two different beautiful schools with beautiful grounds. I would always come home envious, how my own students, Bar Akasham, were able to study in such beautiful buildings, when my own children would be coming home, suffering in cramped, old, decrepit, rented buildings. For two decades, I've been discussing with Rabbi Gazovsky, the need to jump and to build a building. Although Rabbi Gazovsky valiantly kept the school running, single-handedly for many years, going ahead with the building was simply beyond the school's capabilities. But now the time has come. After 22 long years, we have secured the funding. We have found a desirable site. And more importantly, we are determined more than ever to put up a building. To our dear board members, enough is enough. My children and the hundreds of children in Communes have suffered long enough. It's time to put up a building. We owe it to our children. We owe it to the children of Communes and to the future generation of students. They deserve a beautiful, clean building, just like every other child in Lakewood. Let not another Lakewood child go through what the children of Communes have gone through in these 22 years. If we want the next generation to succeed, we need to invest in the future. The time is now, and the moment has arrived. Thank you very much.
My name is Avram Zanarzen, and I appreciate very much the opportunity to be heard, to express my feelings. Like Rabbi Fiazzi said before, I'm not a public speaker. Just a couple of quick points. I am a very proud parent in the Communes. I have three boys. My oldest boy is going into eighth grade. And Communes is a very, very unique school in the sense that there's a tremendous, tremendous devotion from every single member of the staff. We couldn't have had their parents. And we're thrilled to be in the school, I would say in all areas. The one area which is not just a minor issue, not just a little issue, but it's the issue, is that we don't own a home. And as was heard before, I think every child, every school is entitled to a home. Every child needs a building to feel like he has a sense of security, a sense of being able to have his own place to be. To be running from one building to another is not an option. We have moved the building in a tremendous way. The first day of school is passed here. My son, that was in fourth grade, came home and he told me that his classroom is a little above the wall, as the classroom was wider than it was from there before. And I've been to the building many times. It's run down, it's not an option to continue. As we know, it's not the first time we've been in front of the board, you know, trying our options for a building. And it's very, very high time that our, our boys should find their place, find their home. And on behalf of the entire staff of the Communes, of the entire parent body, and all the children, I plead in front of the board to please grant our wish of being able to have the building that we need. Thank you very much.
Moshe Dinis, 111 Morris Boulevard, Lakewood, Jersey, Henry Channel. Hi, I'm from.
Please tell me your last name.
Z-E-I-N-E-S. I just want to tell all of the last two speakers, namely, the one before the last, that the idea of a new school, the board knows that. Board does have to hear about the new schools. Kids all do deserve a school. But let's say for a second, someone comes and builds a school, because there's 300 kids who need a school, and there's beautiful classrooms, but they forget to put up a roof. Right, it would just be ridiculous. No one is denying that they need a school. No one is denying that build the houses is a good way to fund the school. Everyone just wants it done properly. Even though you need a school, you haven't had a school for 22 years. But if there were no front door, would that make any sense? I don't think it would make any sense to anyone. I found Scott over here spoke, he's a great guy. I really love Scott. Scott spoke about the county, the township, Brook and such. All I heard was, no one knows what's flying, what's going to be. The county's talking to the town, the town is talking to the county. Yeah, I'm just saying, of course we have to have a school. The houses are great, everyone's going to be happy about it. There's going to be a hole there. I don't know, maybe they could restrict the hole to only the people who live on the block, not the ones that make the Simkold. I mean, the only ones that can go. That's a joke. I'm just saying, what, what, what can the applicant do here? This is a serious question. You heard the whole testimony. There is how, what the, what the great need for the school is. You also heard from the people who live there. You also heard from Scott, who says the county doesn't have a clue what's going to be with that corner. What, my question, what can the applicant do to make this a safer application? I'm sure, I'm sure it's like when they come in and they say, they want to make a school, but we don't want to put up the sidewalk. And 200 people come to the board and say, my kids need a school, my kids need a school. Yeah, but do you want to have a sidewalk? And then they, you know, I'm just saying, they're all here, they're all in favor of the school, but I'm sure they also want it to be done right. They just can't express it like I can. So I'm expressing it. Yeah, so that's my question, guys. What can the applicant do here to do something that, that hurts? We understand the county's not going to do anything, but what? They're going to widen this, that, only what? I'm familiar a little bit with the corner. I'm also familiar, that's one more thing. But going to the events that night, I have five more on my calendar after I leave here. I was at four parliament meetings last night. I was, I might say shop, shop is at three, and Sunday night, three. I'm familiar with the parking on Oak Street. Yes, I am. I'm familiar with the events on Oak Street. I do not know what, whatever, we're not going to go there. But I am familiar with parking at events. Let's leave it at that. I'm telling you, I, Bar Akasham had a lot of events. What can the applicant do here to make it even better school? It's going to be a great school, but even, you know, better school. Everyone, even the people who live in Lakewood. Okay, so I gave you a good idea of what to ask, okay? Thank you so much. Again, I love everyone here, I'm happy for all of them. It's going to be a great thing, no matter what happens. We all, we all know, it's going to be great. We all want it to be good. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Robert Schubert, eighteen, yeah, I'm joined. Yes. S E H U B E R T.
And, and Mr. Chairman, please why bring this up? I think we get the point, the people who support the school, that it's a great school, they want it. I think we should limit the comments to the people in the neighborhood now and the neighborhood. Okay, so.
I live in the neighborhood, we lived here for like 15 years.
What's your address?
Eighteen Gepin Drive in Miami. We speak with a lot of the neighborhoods. And there, like my friend Yancy Mark would said, we're all full of poor schools, no problem. We, we have had meetings with the people behind the school, they were very accommodating and we share the mutual interest of making sure that Ridge Avenue gets wide, we need a turning lane, that the school want to come across Ridge Avenue to go into the school, it doesn't get backed up. We right now have, someone wants to go over to the outside, everything that's backed up in the morning, it doesn't have a tractor. And just want to, it's turning into an Oak Street corridor with all the schools with only two lanes and no shoulders. And the school wants it done and we want it done, we just want to make sure the county and whatever the planning board can do to ensure that Ridge Avenue gets widened so we can get a turning lane there, all the way from Brook, Brook Road all the way to East White Oaks. And there is room to have it done, it might take a little bit on the county's side, but it's very important to have it done. Again, enough people live in the neighborhood, this is our concerns that we have, we have no issue with the school, they're very accommodating and we hope that gets done, but we just want it done the right way with the county road, busy road, safety concerns and everything gets done properly. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to comment? Are you from the school or from the neighborhood? Do you have anything to add that wasn't said, or you just be right?
I have one thing to add.
Okay, so then let's move fast, just stay with me.
Yes, I just want to make one comment. The school hasn't had a place for a number of peers and the reason being is because we, the peers in school are company, low-income families and we have been able to afford the proper facilities. We finally, at this juncture, came to a lot that we're able to, that we're able to afford and enable to build. This could not sustain itself without a simple, based on the simple resource of income that the school, so the district needs in order to be able to function properly and enable the students to be able to learn. And therefore I feel that the board should take that consideration. Thank you very much.
State your name.
Joseph Frank Klar.
Please spell your name.
Joseph Frank Klar. I'm starting to get driven away pretty well. Just want to base on the testimony. Just based on the testimony, you have the applicant, you mentioned in front of the school, there's a number of six buses. What happened was a car full bay, there's no shoulder on Ridge Avenue, where are all these cars lining up the O's?
Not enough, the way I understood, six buses would be on site, not on Ridge Avenue.
Yep, there's a car full bay, which is many days in Lakewood, except for the busing. We just said I have a large school, so where are the hundreds of cars going? There's no shoulder on Ridge Avenue. And based on also what the applicant in the 27th, regarding, as far as the Japal Simba, she's never been there a night because the firing lane is fully parked and it goes straight onto every lane. I don't know what you're saying, that the Japal parking, there isn't Japal parking, but eighty-two spots. And basically, I'm listening.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who would like to be heard, say, no one, we're closing the republic. Just want to see what's saying.
One thing I do want to point out, I do want to say, it, it is obviously true that this school is one of the, I don't want to say poorest schools, but this is a school that, that where all other schools really were able to come in and build these beautiful buildings. This school has really lagged behind, they really haven't had the wherewithal to build this school. There is no developer here, I just heard somebody make a mention of a developer. There is no developer, this is a school and the only way the school can afford, since it's not a wealthy school with a very wealthy parent body or wealthy grandparents, the only way they can afford to actually embark on this project and get this budget at school, like you heard from the parents, is by embarking on this project, which does come with some dividing these lots and selling them off. And they did a beautiful job with it and, you know, these are nice lots, these are not duplexes, townhouses.
Do you mind, is there a way, obviously selling the whole of lots, as many lots as possible as a money maker, that's what helps the schools?
Correct, that was my point.
We get that. Is there a way that if we were to move Lot 817 down to provide more parking, are there things that we could do, you know, super variances, if you will, to allow you to have the same amount of lots? I don't know if you could rotate the houses 90 degrees and swish them in? I, I think this board is, is, is very sympathetic to the school being built and we're very sympathetic to trying to maximize the amount of money you're making from the sale of the lots. We're also unsympathetic to anything that would be overcrowding on potential safety concerns. I think that was just, that's.
The applicant could make a few revisions to get some monastery parking. The one thing I just have to comment is that everybody says we should do it the right way and not the corner. Right way is what the governing body decides. And I've been doing applications for a long time and it used to be that in the schools, there was no parking requirement for the simple hall to basement. And the governing body decided that was wrong and they put something in the ordinance there. This applicant, except for being within five feet of the property line, and he can eliminate five parking spaces and be a by right conforming application. But what he's trying to do is work with the board. We, we got to the point where they get to know.
It's a dangerous public area and there's no long street parking.
I, I don't, I don't remember the last school application I was involved in where the neighbors didn't say it was a dangerous place and it was going to cause traffic problems. Because pretty much anywhere in Lakewood where you're going to put a school, you have a corner or an intersection or a road where the neighbors come out with the same concern, we all love our children, so.
This is probably the worst intersection in Lakewood.
Right, but my point is that the ordinance doesn't have a parking requirement for the simple halls for the school, so we're complying with the ordinance. What we're indicating is a willingness to adjust the parking on the easternly side of the building and the dumpster and, and there's some room in there where we could pick up five or six more parking spaces. So then we're, we take it from 83 to 800 or 90. I, I, I don't think the neighbors really had enough, they had 200. So we're never going to get to 200, but the, the yardstick that we're supposed to be measured by is the ordinance. The township committee is the one who's supposed to look at, and they look at all the other schools in town and when they looked at the schools, they said, we need to make an ordinance. The schools, I know the board recommends the, the governing body.
What is that ordinance about, the simple hall, do you have a number?
There's no simple hall number for schools. For schools, there's a number, for restaurants, there's a number. For schools, for, for schools, it's straightforward, one for classroom and one for office and all the other, the lunchrooms, the gymnasiums, the other things, they can all be rented out. They don't require parking. The Holy Family rented out their gymnasium all the time.
Brian, it's not outside people coming, that's a school function. Here we have outside, it's a simple hall, people come to the school.
Holy Family had, made those in there, and there's outside people that come to school. And I haven't been to all the schools in Lakewood, I've met to a few of them, and obviously I've met to a few with outside people because my kids have been at Lakewood's schools for 20 years. So the, the applicant is saying.
Might have helped the situation, do you see what's going on?
Well, I, I know what's going on because I come in every meeting and every meeting.
Every lunchroom, that's nicely done, somewhere nicely, it's passable.
And, and the board has made recommendations to the governing body to, to increase the parking and the applicant has the right to rely on the ordinance when they're doing it and to relieve. But there is an ordinance, there's an ordinance that says.
For a shul, not a cable hall.
No, there's an ordinance for schools that says this is how much parking you need to provide.
If it's being rented out, if it's being rented out, don't say that. It says for schools, for schools.
And, and all the schools in, in Lakewood are treated uniformly, which is what this applicant wants, that it would be treated uniformly. And he's, and he's willing to work by getting a few spaces, but.
Not enough. But not enough the situation, regardless if you approve or not, it's going to be a big mess. There's going to be two simps at one time. If you write it down on the record, I, that's my opinion, I might be wrong and nobody's going to know until the end. There's a big lunchroom of 25 hundred square feet and then there's a simple hall, designated simple hall, 43 hundred square feet. That's together almost 6,000 square feet. Okay, this is going to be simple and I hope there's a lot of simple. We can work it out, we can eliminate somehow.
But, but we'll have to wait for the schools to.
I'm not going to finish yet. I think there's, some, some applications, some, some lots don't have where to go. There's a small lot in the shul, there's a lot of acreage over here, there's a lot of place to be worked out. Either pad background, the, the background in the back, or eliminate a house. This place where we can put another 20, 30, 40 house, like parking spot. But you're trying to maximize everything, so pool, playground, two simple halls, 50 houses, it's maximizing what we have.
Right, right now we're talking about the school on the lot that was created by the subdivision that was just approved. Excellent. So we're, we're indicating that if you want to tweak the lots that are already been approved, the applicant is willing to listen to tweaking, but we only.
Well, Mr. Flannery, I point out that that's an interlocutory decision. The board hasn't adopted a resolution on that subdivision, that is not, the ink is not dry and that can be changed. The board can rescind that approval if it required modifying the lots to allow for more parking.
Only questioning another bus, 50 parking lots.
You, you said that you had some suggestions, that the appropriate.
One of the four, five ideas that we're going to.
Would be somebody from the school and somebody from the school can also address your, your concerns with how they do it.
We don't have to get to somebody speaking from the school. We need to get parking spots about 40 to 55, we could do it, we have to, it's going to take some money or less money, that's all. And then, and I mean, a bit of approval, that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I've been sitting here listening to this and I haven't really said anything. But the, the whole concept that you need to develop the property to have money to build a school, you know, and those are really not appropriate land use considerations. And I talk in the heartstrings, it might go to the feasibility, but in terms of the balancing, the positive and the negative criteria, the case law, et cetera, that, that, those are not really, you know, I, I'm not going to say you can't consider it at all, but they shouldn't weigh heavily, we'll put it that way.
And the applicant did not present that as their argument, it was not.
I, I, there were half, there were several people.
The people from the school, that wasn't the applicant's argument.
Well, okay, that's, hold on a second, that's fine. Several of the board members made comments that they're sympathetic, they want to see them make money, they want to see this. These are, I'm just pointing out because you're also talking about, you know, not being able to reduce the lot. If you eliminated one of those lots, you can make it into a parking.
You just mentioned that a few minutes ago, that the school is going to come.
That, that, that wasn't our argument, that wasn't the argument that we were using.
You just said a few minutes ago.
But that wasn't the argument. And I want to remind the board members that this is a virtually conforming application.
Not for two simple halls.
There are two simple halls, that one room is not a simple hall. You can put into the resolution that that one room, if restricted, may not be rented out to be used as a simple hall. That's, that's not.
Find solutions, or we can find another solution, we can have both and figure out the parking. That's all, it's two options. And we have places to work. Sometimes we don't have place, now we do have place and we should utilize it and have it and have the income come in and have the school operate on our own way, or we can just be restricted, that's not enough, you know. Trying to make it happen. Brian, you never answered my question, is there a way of achieving the same amount of lots by moving Lot 8.17? If we gave you all the variances in the world, a magic wand.
Yes, physically yes. Physically yes, practically I'm not sure, that's what I would take.
Can we move to back parking lot, the big deep play area? Can we pave that and have an access over there, five feet, one way or another? It's not fair. Can we eliminate the four and have a playground over there on the side, the one side? Fifty, if we can get, if we can get, we can negotiate, but we would like. I'm starting at four, fifty, we'll go down to four. I'm not, again, I'm negotiating about what we want to do here.
The applicant is indicating he wants to break the, the four by three yards at feet and he feels that he can get to 4,000 and he feels he can get money additional parking. It's overflow parking. So we'll feel self-sufficient.
Chairman, to answer your question, if the board is comfortable with what the board is proposing, the answer is yes. What I just heard was what you've been trying to get in addition to 40 spaces.
That's overflow parking.
Presumably in the back of the building. One of the things that we, we're, we're just looking at here, you may be going insane, if you shrunk the width of lots 815 through 817, you may create half of an aisle width to extend access from where you're showing these shelters, right in the back. It looks like you have a group. The board can act upon the variances.
I would ask for a motion now on this subdivision, based on the understanding that they can shift around and get 20 more parking spaces.
To the chair, just one of the points, one thing I noticed on item six, section three, regarding a four-foot fence for the pool, I think that should be a lot higher. We got eight, 10 feet, something like that?
What if the code allows, I think it's six one.
Eight feet, okay. Second point, just as an aside, if you're trying to bring down traffic to the area, children who will be in that block who you are selling to, would they be able to attend the school as a condition, just to bring down traffic, you know, bussy, whatever else would be blocking off, is that something that can be fixed? Yeah, beautiful building, I'm sure.
I would see the next side of the street for the school. Shh, on the road. Okay, we have that, and in both sides, please. I would ask for motion on this subdivision.
I'm going to make a motion, based on how we discussed, we just made a lunchroom.
We didn't discuss deed restriction.
On the lunchroom, on the lunchroom, not the simple-
Not a deed restriction, should be rented out, I suppose.
We can come back, we can avoid the-
No, you can, with deed restriction, you have to go to court, and the judge has the rule to remove it, that's the reason.
I'm making a motion to restrict the board on this 400 square feet, you're going to have an additional 20 spaces, and you're going to have two access points, Mr. Stevens, into the facility, yeah.
I think you should work together with the county to petition them to widen the whole removal. Add a turn line in the hallway, since it's a safety issue, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Stern, second, is the plan, is it a motion? Mr. Stern, second, or?
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Feges?
Yes.
Mr. Berzel?
Yes.
Mr. Mahier?
Yes.
Mr. Feges?
Yes.
Before we move on, before we move on- Thank you, I just have a couple of things I want to make sure I got on it. You've got to have how many parking spaces? Okay, 20. And the aisle widths, is that by shrinking the lots, to make that access?
Are you proposing any changes to the hallways?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say something.
Well, I'm just trying to understand what that motion was, so we can do the resolution, but there's no lot changes. No lot changes, and the access points are they down the middle? It's nothing to do with the front.
For all my-
But he can't get zoning, it's two houses. Another 25 feet.
Hold the meeting back on the session. Let's continue in a public hearing. Okay, Terry, please welcome, please be quiet in the audience. Terry, please welcome the speaker. Issue we're being- Please, happy conversations, Alston.
Plans and profiles, utility layouts, I guess, trade protection management. We support the waivers ad written specifically, we support the E waivers and the EIS. We're okay with the waiver plans and profiles. And for area services, we would be understanding that if it's granted, they're going to give us necessary information during compliance review, and finally, trade protection management, we're okay with that.
Second, favor I.
Under the showing, we're going to hear testimony shortly to confirm the concentrated uses of the site. And therefore, we can hear that. It appears for our zoning comment too, that parking is being necessary. We're going to deal testimony to our clients and residents. Set by variance appears necessary for site identification sign. This issue of the show before was settled. I think that's the only potential we hear necessary.
This is Chairman John Doe, on behalf of the audience here. Would like to correct the way off, sir. You're very familiar with the site, it's been there for years. We were before this board, three years ago, we got an approval, they had 6,000 square feet. We then went to the county, and the back and forth has taken all of this time. As a result, what has happened is, we have changed the square footage, it's now 5,600. As a result of the county's changes, unfortunately, will be a parking variance for two additional spaces that you had already granted us the last time. What happened with those changes, we think, are for safer circulation, better access plant, and in any event, this starts on two county roads, and we all have to listen to them. As respect to the variances, the sign was approved in the 2016, that hasn't changed. We have broke the old plant on the left, the new plant on the right. You asked for architectural rendering, that's lower on the right side, lower on the left side is the aerial. There's questions about what would be in the site. We hope to have 5,600 square feet of similar retail permitted uses, but at this point, I was not committed. We want the opportunity in the row with producer A and Holden Johnson. With that said, we'll have Mr. Flannery, to the degree that any of the parking concerns, traffic concern, circulation access, what we did with the county, we also had Scott Kettle here. Thank you. The whole truth and everything.
I do, Brian Flannery, Maxine Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As indicated, we're here asking for site plan approval to add an additional building. And for a given part, A1, shows the existing building in hand, existing wall wall building, I'm sure everybody's familiar with. And behind it, the dark ground is the addition we're proposing, a 5,600 square foot addition. The A2, which is to the left of that, is the same existing building in hand, with the dark ground, 6,056 square foot addition that was approved. A3 is a architectural rendering of the proposed building. And A4 is aerial view showing the existing site, as well as the proposed building in the back.
Right, the one on the left was approved by our board?
That is correct. So Terry's first question is with respect to the type of uses and-
What are the changes between the two plans, just that the building's going from on the right of the building to that of the left?
Instead of the building attaching on and wrapping around and making difficult spaces, it's going in the back, it's providing an access between the two of them, so they each have access for the left, safe, easy access for deliveries in the back. The traffic change that's made is on the right-hand side, which is the easterly side. In talks with the county, it's made one way. Anybody who's been out to the site, and we met on the site last week, what happens now is people coming on swan cup, who don't want to go up to the light, they pull into this parking lot, they come out here to the east of the entrance, and they make a left. And Scott and I were standing there for about five minutes, and there were probably 10 vehicles that did that. So this would eliminate that.
Our county may also, can we make it some way in, some way out, or some-
Well, you have two entrances. This plan, the entrance that's to the left, which is closer to the intersection, will be right in, right out only. And in discussions with the county, the entrance, the easterly entrance, which is to the right, the county wants that to have a left turn access, so that people that want to go that way don't go out the back, come out to the light, put more traffic at the light, and it comes through the light.
I think that's what we had to ask. I remember the first one was right in, but-
Yes, 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 yes. And, right, and they're wide to accommodate the turn in most of that.
Best if there's no changes, won't you, in any configuration of the building?
Correct, correct.
What did you say was eliminated, in the country?
Currently, somebody coming from hell, now she must swan the road, that wants to make a left at this intersection, if they don't feel like waiting, they pull into the site, they come around here, they come out to this, and they turn. If they wait, there's a one-way. If they wait, there's-
Well, that's still wide. In your opinion, it's still going to be one way?
It's still going to be one way, yes.
What, we needed a variance in space, we don't need a variance, that was granted, we need a variance in space.
And the way it's set up, you can see looking at all of the land, the front and back, the old parking that's associated with the front and back, the back that we're getting, needs 28 spaces, and there are, per the ordinance, there aren't 28 spaces in the back of the site that, virtually no change. Why wasn't it 100%? Scott's here, he can- Yes, yes, well, and the applicant feels this is better, even though it's less square footage, it's more usable space, and it's better for everyone. So Terry's first question is reported, is the type of uses, as John testified, we don't know what those are, at this point. But it's similar and conforming, we're not asking for permission for an 8, 9, 10 uses. No matter the laws. No, no matter the laws, it's correct. So going in Terry's report, the question one was on the uses, and indicating it's a permitted uses, and we're asking for permitted uses. The two indications, the parking variance, that we need, we have 92 spaces, and per the ordinance, we need 100. Scott is hearing, we give you all the standards, and the reasoning that if these were standalone uses, they need all that, the shared parking, I'm sure the board members know, the type of uses there, that there's a shared parking, and there's offsets in when the parking is needed. So it's my testimony, and I'll be Scott's as well, that the parking that that's provided is adequate for what's proposed. The sign variance in three, we're asking for that variance, but it was part of the prior approval, and it's a condition that occurred on this existing site, when the county keeps taking more to make the intersection bigger. So we're again asking for that variance, but it's a variance that was granted with the last application. With respect to justification for the variance, the master plan 2017, on page seven, division statement, says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart road planning principles. It's my testimony that this does that. It says, with respect to traffic congestion shortage, on page 23, this can be done in part with sound land use plan that promotes reduced reliance on private vehicles through compact development footprints. And what we're proposing here is a compact development footprint in an area where people are driving anywhere. The municipal land use law into AC45, 55, D2 under the purpose of the act, A, encouragement installation to guide appropriate users, development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does this, because it aligns the intersection, if you've been there now, if you've been there recently, in order to get to that intersection, you have to go around some trees and island, and you come back, you do a lot of moving around. This properly aligns that exit with the traffic light, and they indicated the board is one-way, circulation itself, changing the two entrances to properly provide the turnable as well. The municipal land use law under GOL, that provides sufficient space in appropriate location for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses. And this satisfies that goal. The parking variance would be a C2 variance. It needs to show relate to a specific piece of property, that this certainly, at the intersection with the two traffic lights, is a unique property, and this proposal is uniquely suited and advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. The variance can be granted without any detriment to the public good. The parking that's provided, as you'll hear from Scott, is sufficient. The variance will not carry the intense purposes of the zone, and my testimony of the benefits certainly outweighed that. When we look at the other comments in Terry's report, the design waivers were asking for a shade treat, a utility easement waiver of warm frontage. If the board is familiar with that, frontage, 90% of the aid, and say already, if you want us to give you an easement to an area that is nothing going to happen, we would do that, we would prefer- We would prefer to just request the waiver. Under plan review, item two, we will provide signage that Terry requests. The site operation, obviously, the Wawa, it's the anchor store, and all these other stores have parking. And it's going to continue operating, in my opinion, now more efficiently because you have a loading area that'll be behind the two stores very efficiently. There will be pride and pick-up for the train.
We agree with everything. Any more, any questions?
Well, the traffic circulation plan would be in that direction.
Trucks are going in the property this way?
Deliveries, deliveries, crews, and box trucks would be here, the... Yes, yes. Do they have room to get out?
Make the left.
Make the left, yes. And again, Scott's here, he can testify to traffic.
Wawa only takes deliveries, 18 millers. Actually, 18 millers can stop there.
Well, the Wawa has been there for a very long time. And the 18-wheeler parts, as I've seen it, through the past 30 years, just always since I went on the site. And we actually have it indicated there on the circulation plan, and that's going to continue. But that's the current, that's what's currently used by Wawa for loading, and there's no change proposed to that, that's Terry's name now. Excuse me? Well, as Terry indicated in his report, we're going to put signage to accommodate that.
Do you swear a form of testimony before this board with the truth, all truth and nothing else?
Yes, I do. Scott Kellum, McDonald Ray Socialists.
Just the, just the, so, any changes from the county council that will be approved last time?
Well, yes, the changes include county line road where the easterly access, where they wanted two lane egress. The one-way, well, I think that was one way before, but the other thing, the other thing that's positive for this is, one, is we have a direct connection into the signalized intersection. It does not require any modifications in the signal equipment. The only modification exists on the site driveway to bring it in as a workway, more performing. Well, my opinion has a benefit to improve the efficiency of access to it from the site. And the other thing is we're creating, I'll say, a loading alley between the two buildings, so it's cutting the trucks out of, other than the Wawa truck, from doing deliveries in the parking areas.
You feel associated application in the report?
Yes, Justin, yes, I do.
And then this is what the county wants?
It's been three years now, yes, this is what we find, come up with after three years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. See, no one will close the panel. What else can we motion?
It's my opinion it's more important on the easterly side to connect the two buildings, especially to the park right there.
Terry, you have the ballot, you have the parking, you have the parking. It's very annoying, I could mind if I bring a tent with a couple of them in the morning. Park was private, it's a tourist, it's there on the out.
There's a plan here that says not to, is to be signed for the runway, to work down the traffic. I didn't understand what you're saying.
He's indicating it's a dummy park here.
I think it's, you know, people, visitors here are going to be there. Yeah, give them, I'm saying, make sure you're not in that, on the line. Oh, you kind of restrict the parking, restricts the parking space.
Well, we, we would only need each one set, at least one, hopefully.
We'll do where the stop line is showing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion on this application. I'll move to the... Do you have the medical, do we have the... Global, please. Do you have the medical ballot? Yes, I do. Mr. Sable, sir.
Mr. Sable?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
No.
Can I, can I ask, we made a motion, will you, if you can, or can I just speak on? Thank you. Okay, let's continue. Excuse me, Chairman, where's the... So Brian, just show the record, wait.
You've been there too.
Brian, just show the record, wait, speak on with me. Terry, would you like to speak?
Next application, Chairman, SB 2025, okay? Made by Eros Frankel, which is also tied to the home application, SB 2099, also by Eros Frankel. This is an application, you'll notice, 2018 K. That was a previous major complaint or subdivision. This application is primary backseat, not on the center body, lots of, all they put together. The work has been, this was the work for the office on application.
We can mind it?
It was capable, and so the applicant came back, said we need the board's request. We're going to include in the deal one, we took like lots to save the, to present the ready to request. So the applicant is now back to the application as per the board's request.
Thank you. Chairman, would you like to move to me?
Okay, we have two reports, are we, which one are we, first? I'm going to do, I'm going to do the subdivision, SB 2018, first. Subdivision, this is application, SB 2099. All right. Comments, this is the HZ zone, presenting. Created subdivision application, grant minimum area variances for lots fronting Route 9. There it is now. Have minimum wire area varies.
I do. Mr. Peshewa, can you be here, answer this question here? The application, we are identified as a minor sub-division, consolidating three lots, and no chance of minus precaution, rather than making addition. Probably can be part of the site plan, because it has to be for use. Two of these lots, if you might recall, were duplex property, and the front option through site plan, without consolidating all of the lots, getting rid of duplex, and increasing the lot size, so they can...
Actually, can we start? Can we just, sorry, we're still waiting for Terry, and you should go through the...
I believe that's the only variance is required, and you're not seeing any waivers, is that correct?
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mary Mott, on behalf of the applicant, Eros Frankel. Just to remind the board, this is an application that was previously heard by the board. First of all, seems to be my night that every application has a subdivision, and then a site plan associated with it. But we came aboard this board previously for subdivision approval to create a lot upon which an autozone store was to be constructed. So the board will probably remember that a subdivision map previously filed for residential development on this parcel with a commercial site on the front parcel. However, due to an error, there was a residential lot that was within the required buffer to Route 9. The board had felt that leaving this lot as essentially an unusable lot would lead to problems in the future, as potentially an owner wouldn't want to pay taxes on it, and it was just going to leave us with what was essentially an undersized and virtually unusable lot. So we are back here this evening with a new application to consolidate that quote-unquote unusable lot into the commercial lot to create a larger commercial lot, and actually, we're decreasing the non-conformity of this already approved commercial lot. With that, I guess I can turn over to Joe, because we're going to do these separately again? You want to do first the sub, first the, I guess, it's really a consolidation, wasn't it? Satisfaction, but, okay, so Joe, you can just focus on the subdivision consolidation.
For purpose of the subdivision of lot, new lot will be 34,000 acres per feet, or whatever is required in each of seven zones. Again, we are increasing the side lot, trying to reduce enough before we consolidate in three lots, therefore, we see new criteria in the, in general welfare, and the board agree. Not creating any new areas, might increase by, consolidate now, right, on eight more.
We're actually lessening the non-conformity.
Any questions? And the board members on this consolidation of the lots?
Is that a side-by-side, you can't see it, so you...
Correct. We need Brian to mark it. So the left plan is a minor subdivision plan here, which is part of your guide, it's just showing me two lots that were part of the duplex that we consolidated. The right plan here is the actual site plan, which you asked for, uh, depicting...
Can we get a side-by-side?
These are two different sheets now, there was no side-by-side. The layout plans submitted had a circulation line on it. That's the side-by-side.
Anybody in the public would like to speak about the subdivision? See, no one will close the... Mr. Jackson, you okay with that? Can we take two votes later? Yes. Okay, so now, Terry, back to you.
I want to move on to the site plan portion of the project, which is application, SB 2099. And I'm now reading from my July 10 letter. And if you look under zoning, you can be reading at the bottom of page two, the project requires front yard setback variance, side yard setback variance, rear yard setback variance. Are they...
I'm sorry?
Front side... Yeah, front yard setback to, or, or, side yard setback. Rear yard setback, we're going to request testimony as the signage, and as to whether any sign, sign, or anything necessary. I believe that's in order, zoning, and other design waivers, or under buffer relief, is necessary along the southern boundary between 28 and 8, as well as the western boundary of joint at Route 5. Design waiver is required, a six-foot height for a portion of fencing adjacent to Route 8 to the south. I believe that's all we need.
So Terry, all the variances on existing variances.
Well, I want to get testimony from the applicant.
So the layout of the site is very similar to what was originally approved by the board of this whole lot. Have a site plan approved, two, about consolidating the three lots. The side yard was... Original lot, 7.02 is the original, 25,000 square foot, not a bunch of, very small part of the seven. You have a copy of the original subdivision plan, shows all the lots in the subdivision. And if you can see from the plan, 7.02 is the front way. This is an exhibit, this is not subdivision. But this is the existing, original 7.02. And then there's the duplex here on 7.03, and take all three of those and apply.
And that's the... This is approved?
That's fine, that's already been filed, that's a fine.
They have extra space in that, put it in the...
Put it together, and it gives us a couple of different... At worst, we're able to push the site back seven and a half feet along Route 9, so now we can fly with a 65-foot setback from center line required by your previous...
Please be quiet in the audience, you're not here for me.
It also provides us a better buffer in the rear. Previously, we were approved for a 10-foot rear yard setback. Our last application, we received a 10-foot setback, and we continued on that next problem. Now, combining all three properties, they all have a third, two, and a line with setback, and change. It was approved, the original site plan that was proposed at the, at the last...
Wasn't there a piece of property that was not locked?
And that's exactly, basically, you put it in the application.
We listened, we listened to you, that's what I was trying to tell you. There was that, there was that one, there was that one lot that was that...
It was not locked.
Yeah, it couldn't be used for anything.
Correct. So now it becomes the buffer to the proposed one. You can see the lot line on the site plan, that the entire area actually becomes buffer, residential, which is further than 200 feet now, from Route 9 to the wide, providing, basically, we're applying application.
And we have all the variances, we have all the subdivision, just for existing variances.
Existing variances except for one 25-foot setback. The 25-foot side setback here was originally approved, it was a secret heat back.
That wasn't moved without, was that...
That was for with residential.
Correct.
And this, the 10-foot was actually through the residential, 30, 25 feet to the south, next to the van. Before, we had 10 feet of residential, previously by the board, and we now have 32 and a half, 50 required. It's our testimony that Uber important, it's also a front end of this property. This acts more as a side than a rear, 25 feet is required in the side. For all intents and purposes, we have ample separation between nobody to respect at any type of layout. However, on any site, for a corner lot, you have two fronts, a side, and a rear, is required to follow. The only variance of the creative new autozone layout is this slight variant of front yard setback, where we thought a 33 feet, which is required. The reason for that was, we widened the building, shortened it, to try and increase this space.
With various variances, who...
Tell us, Uber important. That's the only new variance, that's different from the original site. Yes, the autozone has looked at this site, it's, after the parking, and the layout, they have very specific requirements on any of their sites. And they have a parking for their, for clients, the park requirements, and the... We provide ample loading area, we provide direct exposure. Now, there's a question regarding circulation. Our driveway location is actually further from Route 9 now than the original approval, which we gave the OAK approval on. The DMT has seen this, and provide way, seven and a half feet closer to Route 9, and prove it. Right, and have further away, which gives a little bit more separation.
And the original map approval, how many was it?
There was two more, so the original, it wasn't denied.
Well, was it...
Well, it was approved.
It wasn't denied, it was approved in subdivision map, actually got filed. But after the subdivision map got filed, somebody caught, maybe it was that week, but somebody caught that, there was an error.
Didn't without...
Yeah, it was.
Was it?
Is it?
Give you credit, Phil. No, it's, it was, this application took a substantial amount of time to get approved.
So we approved it?
We approved it, and then it turned out that, true with the duplex we had before, it had 200-foot, or, or, it's changed, it changed about a brushe block.
Where was this not?
Not after the subdivision map got filed. Subdivision map actually got filed, and then the error was caught. Then you've got two duplexes that are within the required setback from Route 9, so they couldn't be built. Then you've got two duplexes that are within the required setback from Route 9, so they couldn't be built.
You reached the point where how many you got?
The total of sixty.
Two months.
Twelve years.
Ten. Two units are coming in.
I think we're, the, the only two we can block, the, the box place, the old ones don't.
The autozone has a much different type of user pressure, so we still have one and a half of the building in storage. In auto parts. I would say, in this case, I believe about thirty-one hundred square feet.
Whatever, some of the photos on those applications, some of the store plates.
They need a new segment.
Correct. They generate.
It's a change of use. It's a change of use.
Or, or those.
No, 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 auto parts work, but they use the same layout. They will require to come back, but you need to take the entire building. Maybe you're part of a comeback, maybe.
Anybody?
I don't know about that. I, I think retail to retail would be the same years old. But you'd know that better. I was going to.
You don't have to be a Ford department.
It's not the fact that this whole city is, but the potential. The zoning officer, she should be ready to be, for a parking pad, which is.
But the retail is going to have, if you've got a variance, to be X number square feet and have X number parkings based on. And then it changes to another retail use, whether it's a shopping center, wherever the category is retail, but they.
What is the list? We're not asking for a parking.
I know. We're not asking for a super market, so autozone.
Correct.
What are the basis?
I'm just identifying.
A supermarket, a supermarket is not a retail use, and we certainly need to come back and get cycle. It's not the same use.
It's right over here.
A change of use from autozone to the supermarket, yeah.
Retail, that's what John said. Retail.
I don't think the zoning officer will sign.
How many parks are needed?
If this were, if this were only retail, the ordinance would want to be one hundred, which would be thirty-four more.
Correct, Joe. Correct, I love the change of use. What is on, what is on? If John's saying that we change the air, that, if it doesn't, right here. Some of them said, it's not change of use. If, if it's not, it's a rectangle that's in the middle. And the five, four markets, if you have autozone, that's a category for storage. That's what I don't want to say, for whatever it is, you have. I don't want to say. I want to ask the board.
I only have twenty-eight.
That's a, that's a. If the zoning period is necessary, the zoning officer cannot approve it unless, unless you have.
That's not worth.
Correct. I would be saying, I'm not sure what this change is. Any questions? Many board members? Any question, any orders?
Curbs out. It's five twelve.
I will talk to the public on this application. Anybody in the public like to be heard, please come forward.
Moshe, this is one-one-two, I'm from Polari, which I think is pretty close, far as I can do, zero-eight-seven-one.
This is our first testimony against a court.
All right, first, I understand this is some sort of amendment, yeah, yeah, anyway, I'm not, well, yeah, I'm not sure if they will not explain here, but I'm just trying to, just two questions, and then I'll be able to do. Where you have duplexes here, and we have an autozone, do those duplexes have a design waiver that the parking is like head-on? Or is it real, or is it just parking? Or are we not talking about that?
Do duplexes have their own marketing, there's standard duplex styles and access to Uber?
Please don't say standard, because that's a terrible thing to like. I'm asking about head-on, that means that there's a waiver like on those roads where you can't park, and you can't drive down the road, because they mess this all up. They allow the parking, what's the, you have parking like way running, you have traffic? See parking, it's like, is it not here? Stacked parking, thank you. Do duplexes have stacked parking?
Yes.
Why is this written?
The road for the stacked parking.
There's no.
The road is already true, it's not something.
Right, right, I, I understand. Understand, so.
It's not, it's quite nothing that we can change as we go through this application. This application.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to, that I wasn't exactly sure what we're talking about here, because I heard about the duplexes, and I heard that duplexes are not really. So what's the change from the twelve duplex units to ten? When did that happen? Now or before?
We are, we are limiting to duplexes to make room for this application. There are anger that duplex say, and we, we don't care whether there are previously moved or not.
And the public road where the other two duplexes used to be, are we still doing that same road? The whole road each, even though we're taking away two duplexes? Is there a cul-de-sac at the end of the road, or?
Yes.
How, why does that bawl?
It is RSI compliant, is it a recall?
All right. Does anyone know what that means? If you says RSI.
I don't know.
No, it is that, I, question to the board. Hello, people? Hello? Hey, guys. One planner comes up here and tells you, some of you, that there's an RS-RS compliant bolt. What do you people think that means?
It's a little off.
So, how, why does that bawl?
Can I go radius forty feet? I believe it's forty feet, I don't have the.
Di- diameter is forty?
No, radius.
Right, what's the diameter? Eight is the diameter. Are there houses on the cul-de-sac?
Again, that's off-site.
No, your, your outside, your duplexes, are there duplexes?
We're not proposing any personal, only for the first vote. I have opposing.
Designs, they're not getting us anything actually more than the United.
All right, even though, I just wanted to know what, what does, because I read the plans of that, those specific parts that I asked you, they always usually leave that off the lot, so that's why I'm asking.
On the side, I'm looking to be thankful, he's standing on my hour corner, obviously, Vermont, last two duties, and all the traffic, because we're going to peek out. What is he doing? He's being thankful for that. Lots, they're all, they're all.
So anyway, in, in the future, would it be possible to the di- diameter of the bolt to be written on the plans that you're involved in?
Well, yeah, that's forty feet.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, you sure plan that KPA, that you bring in from KPA, the cul-de-sac bolt, could, could you put the di- diameter on the line?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyways, the public, if you heard of this, I'm going to say no, closing the bolt. And that's the most of this application.
This will be two votes here.
Yes, sir, not a second.
Terry, what was saying?
Two votes.
One on.
Oh, well, thank you.
We need the, we need two more.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Planksmann, who's, Mr. Isaacson seconds, just on the subdivision. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, now I would ask for a motion on the.
I'll move to approve it. I know, just to get the resolution, but I just like to feel the resolution.
And if it would change on auto parts, sir, they would need to come back and show him the parking. That is my motion.
Second. Okay. Mr. Isaacson moves, Mr. Planksmann seconds, roll call, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dead bus?
Okay, next.
Next application is SC twenty.
Shh.
SC twenty-three eight-six, made by the manager, required subdivision to get lot lines. It is six sites, one of the lots that is six synagogues, they've moved lot lines, they also have extra kitchen and then like to. That's the guy who cleaned, but it's by six.
Terry, we're trying to. Going off the board, what I want to. Page three, there's seventy. Variants here necessary for minimum rear door accessory structure setback, as well as the buffer requirements for considering variances across three parking. Setback accessory required. I believe that's the only as we leave, saw it on several variances. Is that correct? And then under design waivers, to three of the letter, there's an issue with respect to the off-screen parking space ledge. We recommend that that be favored as indicated in the letter. And final variances, I'm sorry, the final design waiver to the white street trees along Candy Bowl or these, and he's coming.
Mr. Wineson. Thank you so much. Good evening this time. Marion Wineson on behalf of the applicant, Joseph Ginsburg. Like I said, it's my night tonight that every application has like two parts to it. But this one is really, really just a simple lot realignment application, where new lots are being created as a result of this application. The five lots on the cul-de-sac known as Venezia Court, which is off of Somerset Avenue, were created by a subdivision about fifteen, fifteen or so years ago, and the subdivision map was long since filed. These vacant lots were only recently sold to end users. All that time, the party that got the subdivision filed the map, held on to the lots, and then they were recently sold a few months ago. So they were sold to end users. Basically, there was, somebody went in, developer, I guess, went in, he got, he got subdivision approved, map got filed, I mean, early 2000s. He sat on the lots for years and years and years, until he finally sold them to five end users. As a result of the recent sale, and the fact that there is an existing shule on lot thirty-seven point oh one that for starters needs pedestrian access to East Kennedy Boulevard, as that is where the congregants come from, and yeah, there's a shule actually that fronts, it fronts on East County Line Road.
Thirty-seven eleven.
Thirty-seven point eleven, uh.
Four one.
It is a one, thirty-seven point oh one.
Oh, seven.
The shule is actually, the new lot thirty-seven point oh one, the shule actually fronts on East County Line Road, but most of the congregants come from East Kennedy Boulevard, and to walk on East County Line Road is quite dangerous. So what happens is that the parties got together, along with the owner of lot thirty-seven point oh two, which has an existing house on it, to realign the lot lines on three of the lots along Venezia Court, as well as that house on East Kennedy Boulevard, and the shule on East County Line Road. I think, as Terry alluded to earlier, given that the shule lot is being changed, a new site plan exemption for the shule lot is also being requested. The only variance we're leaving, being sorted, setback relief for an existing shed, buffer relief for the shule, and relief for parking in the setback in the shule, those same variances that we asked, that seem to be requested on every single shule and school application. But just to be clear, that's it. There are no other variances, and there are no new lots being created as a result of this application. It will still be the one shule, and then there will be the three new, the three, the three new lots, well, four new lots. I guess four lots are getting, three residential lots are getting changed in terms of their, in their size as a result of this application. Let me just ask, I don't think Brian was sworn yet for this, John?
Sure, very good question. I mean, why is broken the truth all taken out?
I do, Brian Plon, I'm actually a licensed special agent, a professional planner. I have three exhibits before you. The A one is the existing improvement plan, and the pink lot lines are what we're proposing. The orange lot lines is what exists today. You have to look kind of close to see the difference. Nobody is driving down a road is going to see the difference, the changes occurring in the backyard. A two is a copy of sheet forty of the tax map, which again shows the same configuration. Shows the same configuration as we have on A one. And then A three is the site plan exemption map. And we have to roll that up on its side to be the same thing, but what I did with that map is I showed the existing shule. The yellow area is the area that's been taken out of the shule lot, the blue area is the area that's been put in. And basically, what's occurring here is you end up with a half at East Kennedy, Mary.
So are you creating any variances?
No, no new variances with respect to the shule. Nothing is changing with respect to the shule, except that there's going to be a path in the shule property right away, so that the congregants can walk from Kennedy Boulevard through that.
And all the lots will make it. What does it take from?
The, well, the, the, the lot. Yes, thirty-seven point oh two has a house on it. And that house is part of it, the, the land that's needed to get out to the Kennedy Boulevard.
Are you creating any variances?
No.
They're basically just realigning lot points to give the shule more.
Well, they, we're, we're changing the backyard of the shule to provide pedestrian access on the shule's property.
You're not creating any variances?
We're not creating the variances with respect to that, we're, we're not changing the parking for the shule, we're not changing how the shule gets used.
That makes it very small to do.
Uh, what? Certainly, I would never disagree with any, any service report. I'll look and see if there's anything that I, I need to comment on. With respect to the, uh, the, the site plan, he indicates shade tree utility improvements may be required. We're requesting a site plan exemption, so we're requesting that we don't add shade tree utilities. The only ones where you have the shade tree utility improvements on Kennedy Boulevard is the existing house, and nothing's changing on that house. That, that owner is cooperating in this application to allow land for them to get it. And the same thing with, with street trees there. It's an existing developed lot, it's developed in accordance with the ordinance. We don't, we don't see the duplex to go that route.
The line, which one is, which one is, the orange shule?
The orange is current. The pink is proposed.
And pick the, it looks like the. So two of the lots are being, uh, changed.
Every, three of the lots on the cul-de-sac, the shule, the shule lot and the existing house are all changed. The two on Somerset Avenue do not.
These two are not.
And, and all of this is lot line configuration changes, so that the neighborhood is happier with.
I'm assuming that those pre-ulation.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I want to do the lot, we need to hear some smaller.
Anybody in the public like to be heard on this application?
I would like to, with respect to the existing variances and stuff, with justification, so John has something to put in his. The, the master plan talks about a need for housing on page three. Position statement says encourage development and redevelopment, which is on page seven. And at the municipal land, it's led to eighty, eighty-fourty-one, fifty-five D two, says encourage municipal action, and it relates to an existing shed.
This is her shed. That's the touch.
Thank you. Is Brian's property just the gain, or the property for the shule?
Well, it's not all for the shule, it's, it's, there's, uh, three of the vacant, three of the vacant lots want to adjust their lots to build houses the way they want.
Are there existing houses in any of those sections, man?
The, the five lots along the cul-de-sac are all vacant.
But they're already, but they're already owned and approved for housing?
Yes.
So they're not adding on additional housing? Maybe you feel that's bigger, but they're not adding. Maybe they're adding to their. Extra housing because of that?
No, there's no extra housing in the area that's over the subdivision. Trains, no units, really not.
Thirty-seven oh one is the shule, that gives access, pedestrian access. Thirty-seven oh two is the existing house that cooperates so that the shule gets the pedestrian access. These three lots, it has a cul-de-sac, top to top, everything. The big gamer is the one in, is the bigger backyard.
Okay. Anybody in the public like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Sign on, we'll close to the public. That's promotion of this application. Mr. Isaacson is moved. Cycle's roll call, please.
Mr. Kurt.
Yes. Mr. Save left.
Mr. Kurt.
Yes.
Mr. Reddison.
Yes.
Mr. Byron.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Planksmann left option. Who's coming up?
That's been doing three twenty, congregation, building, three trees, and the site plan for the synagogue, Al Marah.
Okay, uh, we, Mrs. Stern says he has to do nine o'clock, we can't go past nine. So I, I don't think we'll finish the agenda tonight. Uh, should we tape an hour or anything?
They have a, they consider...
Is there any photos in the garden? Is there any photos in the garden?
Yeah.
Is anybody closing it for you? Is there any, is there any photos in the garden? Is there any?
Okay, what was it?
Just about, about, after number, number ten, he's probably a five minute one.
Don't need, don't need.
This is like this real application.
Do you want to do this one in fifth? All right, how about I just skip this one, and we'll do the ten minute one, and not leave us five minutes?
The, 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 the only thing is we have, we have a...
Right, why don't you do that? Uh, why don't you, why don't you call it?
There's a lot of people came out.
Yeah, for, for the synagogue?
Yeah.
So, so, let's move. Okay, how do we go, but why don't we adjourn the other ones now, so everyone can go? And what's it going to do, Dave Alley?
It's six.
It's, ladies and gentlemen, um, we're running out of time this evening, and this next application is going to take us to the board's curfew of, uh, tonight, which is nine o'clock. So I'm going to make the announcement, uh, the following cases are going to be heard on August sixth, six o'clock, this meeting, although we don't have further notices. That's, um, number eight, uh, ST twenty-three ninety-six, Border Kite Icon. Uh, number nine, SP twenty-three thirty-nine AA, Cobb Denai Torah. Uh, twenty-three forty-three, Congregation Torah, Utefila?
Utefila.
Utefila. And, uh, number eleven, twenty-two ninety-nine, Jonathan Rubin. All those matters, again, will be heard on August sixth, two thousand nineteen, six o'clock, this meeting, although we don't have further notices.
Yeah, and, and now that, just, just, okay, we have those across the office, or tonight when I say we have them. Whatever. Okay, just, uh, okay, hold on. Okay, so, I, I, are you going to want the letter, Sharon?
Yep.
Okay, please be quiet as an audience.
All right, beginning with submission waivers, I have B waivers indicated, uh, C six plans for profile, C thirteen D I S, recommend waivers. B waivers, um, the profile, the waiver hearing purposes, with the understanding, again, that certain information has site flash review, uh, and we support the waivers in the audience.
Three of those.
Move second.
Site block, never I, I.
All right, undersounding, uh, various required for, um, minimum front yard setback, uh, I believe maximum building coverage. Uh, we believe that parking relief is, is still necessary, we'll get testimony, sure that's the case. Um, three years necessary from, uh, a bumper bumper to the unwanted properties. Uh, off street parking proposal within, uh, five feet. I believe that's all, the various relief, uh, have a zone waiver, um, required for street trees and all the project. Okay, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll get this done quickly. Mary Weyssin on behalf of the applicant congregation to heal us, ring tree. This application is for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a two-story addition to an existing synagogue on the property. The proposed synagogue with the addition will contain a three thousand one hundred seventy-five square foot sanctuary. There are a few variances associated with the application, which we will provide appropriate testimony to justify the branding of, including, again, the typical, um, bumper relief and the, and the parking within the side yard setback. There will be no simple hall on this one. There will be a room simply to host a Shabbos kiddish, but that's it. Um, with that, no outside simples. With that, I would ask you to have Brian sworn.
Do you swear a firm testimony before we're sworn with the shirts of all twos and not the others?
I do, Brian Cliner Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have, uh, two plans marked, A1 shows the, uh, proposed shul, the two-story addition to the existing shul. Uh, A2 is a copy of tax map showing where the property is located, right on Langell Road. Uh, as Mary indicated, uh, we're looking for a front yard setback, uh, from Langell Road of thirty feet, and that's occurring because of the substantial, uh, rightway dedication to the county. The hedge area on A1 is the rightway dedication. So that, that's not something that we're creating, that's something that, uh, of course, we're, we're coming in with an application, the county's taking a large area. Uh, we're also looking for...
Well, that's an existing building, right?
That's to the existing building.
Yes.
Uh, and, and you can see the proposed addition is in the back. Uh, okay, variants for maximum building coverage, uh, we're asking for thirty-two point one one percent, uh, where twenty-five percent is the max required. Uh, parking, we're looking for a relief, we're proposing thirty-two spot for forty-eight are required for the ordinance. Uh, and, and again, the, the ordinance, that has interpreted now is we're over three thousand, so it's point five times the number of square feet. If this was done in the past, or if we reduce the, uh, the, uh, some of the details, we know the chart. Says required forty, and you have your twenty-three. And that was, uh, new lines, that later had, we weigh, me and Hemstake, it should be capitalized, but, okay, so it's, it's got a plan from last year, uh, and, and that's why it's shown that way on the plan. But the new way, we all know when we don't assign the went way, is you take one point five times the exact, you need point thirty-two. Uh, and, and, and what we should point out is that this is an existing congregation, there's no more people coming. So all the people that come, they come now, and they, they have a few parking spaces now. Now they're going to have thirty-two parking spaces.
Do they have now?
Excuse me?
Do they have thirty-two? Do they have thirty-two?
They, they have two.
They have two, right?
Also, this, this isn't our fifteen neighborhoods, so this is...
They're not going to know what to do.
Right. And it's one end of perspective, this is not a, this is not a neighborhood that, you know, that's, that, that we're increasing the congregation base by that much, this is just a addition, it's to accommodate existing congregation base.
I mean, uh, we also need relief from the twenty-foot bumper, uh, and again, we have landscape fences, so it's my testimony, we don't need that. Uh, we, we need relief because parking equipment, like these are the inside property lines. Again, that was done in order to maximize the parking, uh, that we just provide. Justification for the, uh, those variances, the, the variances in, uh, the, uh, master plan two thousand seventeen, it is based instead of the coverage development and redevelopment, and this is certainly a, that was on the route, and to, uh, create, uh, proper shul for the neighborhood of the season. Uh, the, uh, the municipal land use plan in eighty-eighty-fourteen, fifty-five D two, on the purpose of the act, it's current, this plan, we got the appropriate, full land development, and, 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 we will redo, uh, all of the comments in the report. Uh, he has comments on the shade tree utilities, which, uh, we feel and believe, I think, facility are needed, but we'll do everything for them here.
Mark, it's, it's...
The trash would, would be public. And, and obviously, we have to do whatever. And, and obviously, if all the work doesn't prove it, then we have to get ready for it.
Here is everything else.
Yes.
Any questions?
The current skirt, one of the shul, about it?
About fifteen hundred thirty?
Where you want to do fifteen hundred to six thousand?
No, thirty-one.
Thirty-one, uh, fifteen hundred to thirty-one, and you live for two parts of that, thirty-two.
Yeah. I hope you have one more.
You hope that what?
You have more comments, double.
They show all the congregants, they're good.
They're worried.
They worry.
They worry.
Language implies.
Everybody have good concepts, listen.
Any other questions, maybe we're a little something.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm like here at this one. Perfect. Pretty subtle, right?
Yes.
Close to the, oh, that's...
Uh, who would you vote for the application? And Mr. Paul, second.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Yes. Didn't we put off the, uh...
Go ordinance.
Yes, and, uh, and, and, of course.
No, we have correspondence.
No, we have correspondence. No 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 correspondence. I think that's a pretty big deal. To get, to get rid of a landscape bumper, put a solid fence there instead, and just do it on correspondence without having the neighbor know about, I, I don't think that's a good idea.
Kurtz, have you reviewed earlier tonight of the reservation, uh, the, the, we feel that, that the way you work, you need to, or, 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 or,[1434.12]
Who is it? Could you cross your eyes? Hope to have it heard as regularly as we're carrying.
I'll second.
Yes, submit application.
We'll do a little bills.
All right.
Okay, uh, actually, now, from, uh, August, uh, Ally, when's next week? August 13th?
January 13th.
Okay, which is, it's in the Mondays. I'll be here. You're not going to be here?
You're both.
Oh, you're not coming? Mr. Myers, you'll be here for August 13th?
August 16th?
Okay, Mr. Bates, you can hear? Okay, so Ally, we have, besides the set notes, we have four. Justin, settle it? So Ally, if you'd be favorable, please, uh, send out an email.
Nobody can see the response.
Some people, some people can't get their email.
I, I understand that.
And Ally, have you, have you emailed? Want to respond to emails?
Um, also, just to the board, I'd like to head up,